He's enjoying fall.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and call to order the Hood River City Council meeting of November 8th at 6:00 PM. Just remind people in the audience to turn off or silence your cell phones. And I'm gonna read the land acknowledgement and then we're gonna do the pledge of allegiance. And directly after that, we'll have business from the audience. And the first person that's gonna speak, just so Jen can queue them up, is David Samuels. And he's joining us via Zoom this evening. So as we meet tonight, let us all remember that today, we are stewards of land that has been home to indigenous peoples for thousands of years before the recent arrival of the European heritage dominant culture. We honor this land's ancestors as we go about our business today. And now we'll have the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, veritable, and justice for all.
Okay, he's on the phone versus in person. Okay, David, can you hear us?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Sorry about that.
Yeah, not a problem. You have three minutes. And I just wanted to let you know that we did get your correspondence and it was sent to the full council, so we do have that, but you have three minutes.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you, Mayor McBride and city councillors for allowing me this time to speak to you. I want to speak to you today about the termination of the city easement, which runs through our property and our neighbor's property on the 200 block of Hazel Avenue. I moved to Hood River with my family a year ago and we just love it here. I can't even say that enough. I'll even use 20 seconds of my time to tell you how much we love it. We purchased our home in April and then I found out about the easement after I had a survey done on the property. And the surveyor was aware of these many, he said the city was aware of the easement. And it was my understanding back then in April that the city was looking into terminating it as it was determined there was no need for it. I guess it was put in place around 1990 and the city sold the properties back then. I think there were four parcels. And after they sold the property, they approved and allowed two homes, including mine, to be built across the easement in the mid 90s, I guess. So this easement now runs east to west through like the first 20 feet of my home and my next door neighbor's home from our front door to our kitchen. And the easement impacts four properties, as far as I can tell, on Hazel. We're also, we're under contract to purchase the lot next to our home to the east. And we're scheduled to close in January, but we can't close until this matter is resolved. So I'm hoping we can get it resolved by then. And I know the city engineer came out last month. He looked at the properties and again, it seemed it was determined that the city has no use for this easement. It was put in place to widen Hazel Avenue 30 years ago. And you know, if you just walk down Hazel Avenue, you'll see there's no need to widen the street. My neighbors who are on the lot next to the steps have been in communication with the city and all indications have been that the easement would be terminated. Yet recently, I've heard through their conversations with the city planners that the city wants to charge us $43,000 to make the easement go away, which was really shocking to all of us. And I was wondering who determined this amount and why we would have to pay at all. But we've received no financial benefit from having this easement. We purchased our home at market value. Why would the city ask for taxpaying property owners for this huge sum of money when the city is in no way being harmed financially by terminating an unnecessary easement?
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you for your comments. We can't comment on anything that has to do with real estate. We have to discuss those things in executive session.
Okay.
But thank you for your comments and for your information you sent earlier.
Great, thanks.
All right. Tracy Thomas-Paul. I think we prefer that everyone kept their masks on. If, as long as we can hear you well, yeah. And if you can tap that and it'll turn green and then, then everyone in the audience that's watching on Zoom or YouTube can hear you.
There you go.
Okay, thank you. I'm Tracy Thomas-Paul, speaking on behalf of Protect Our Parks Hood River, a nonprofit group which advocates for city parks. Two years ago, 72% of voters amended the city charter to protect parks. The charter now forbids any transfer without a vote of the public's right to freely access city park property for recreational use. However, from late spring 2021 through today, the city has sanctioned trespass on a public park by allowing part of Morrison Park to be converted into a long-term camping facility for houseless people. This violates the city charter. The council needs to take action to remove the Morrison Park encampment and provide vulnerable individuals safe and sanitary temporary shelter in an appropriate facility meant for emergency shelter. The Morrison Park camp is located just west of the no overnight camping, no campfire sign across from the Rotary Skate Park. The campsite has makeshift structures, piles of garbage, campfires, and human waste that poses a health and safety risk to vulnerable campers, the public, the children that use these parks, and nearby neighbors. The city may think that a 2021 state law allows such encampments on city parks, but that's incorrect. The flimsy structures in the park are not the emergency shelters that Oregon House built 2006 allows. HB 2006 allows cities and public service agencies to provide emergency use shelter that, one, meets applicable housing codes, two, provides sanitary facilities, and, three, creates no unreasonable risk to public health or safety. It is not an invitation to vulnerable individuals to construct their own camps. The hazards to both camp residents and the public from allowing this trespass in Morrison Park include unsafe structures that don't meet local building codes, sanitation and human waste issues, garbage accumulation, fire risk from campfires, and trespassing crime. Being houseless isn't a crime, but taking items from local businesses or vandalizing property is unacceptable. City police tell callers that they've been instructed by city administrators not to address Morrison Park issues. The city must address the problems now. When Hood River Shelter Services is providing 24/7 emergency shelter and for next spring and summer when shelter services may not operate, we suggest helping the Morrison Park campers to move to the shelter for the fall and winter, then allocating funds to lease an appropriate emergency shelter for the next year. Potential locations include the vacant Hood River News or the Sears Buildings. Both have restrooms, could meet city building codes, and are close to hospitals shopping the cat bus route. Removing city parks from public recreational use and converting them to long-term camping facilities violates the city's charter and is an affront to human dignity. Turning a blind eye to the human needs of people living in Morrison Park and failing to support nearby neighbors by providing a safe and sanitary neighborhood is a failure on many fronts. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Tracy. I just wanna make a comment and then our city attorney might wanna make a comment too. Our law enforcement people really pretty much know everyone down there by name. We are working with other agencies to try and help the people that are down there. Some people may choose and will want to go into the shelters when they become available. And our city attorney has looked into this and has written a memo to council within the last six weeks of what the laws are and aren't in the state of Oregon and cited some case law. And so we could, we could send that to you so you would know what's happening. But if you wanna address that a little bit, Dan, too?
Thank you, Mary. Yes, Ms. Tannenbaum raises a good point. The city was, has been watching this and we, as soon as the campers showed up, the police department has engaged with them, has been working with the people living there to find them services. And so it's not something that the city has sanctioned. I don't think we're, I'm pretty confident we're not in violation of our charter, but it's a problem that we're working with. We hope that when the warming shelter opens later this month, I believe, that these people might be interested in moving into the shelter. But under state law and certainly under federal law, the city is not, not lawfully able to criminalize camp, public camping. Bill passed this last legislative session. It's very difficult to remove homeless campers from public land. I hadn't thought about that this is somehow a shelter, as Ms. Tannenbaum suggests. I don't believe it is. You never perceived it that way. The police department certainly hasn't. But there have been a number of federal lawsuits filed by homeless advocacy groups to invalidate local ordinances that criminalize camping. Because in this country, basically, if you want to forcibly remove homeless campers, you have to criminalize their behavior. The city of Hood River doesn't have such an ordinance. It's not my recommendation that you adopt such an ordinance that would criminalize camping. City of Grants Pass has struggled with the same issue after the City of Boise case came out of the Ninth Circuit. They tried a kind of creative approach to criminalize basically all of the accoutrements of camping, all the stuff, the tents. And District Court for District of Oregon saw through that and invalidated Grants Pass's ordinance. So federal and state law really limits your ability to kick these people out and relocate them to some other jurisdiction. And I think the most you can do under current law is to work with them and to help find them services and find them another place to live. But it's not something that staff has been ignoring. It's not something you've been ignoring. It's a very difficult thing to deal with in the current legal climate, not to mention the global pandemic. So. And I'd be happy to send you a copy of the number that appeared last month.
Thanks. Thank you for that information. All right, Forrest Fisher?
Hello, City Council Hood River. Thank you for tonight and your time. I am here with Mark Janik and I signed up honestly just to have Mark come up. I yield my time to him.
Forrest, could you?
I didn't quite catch that. That you said there.
I apologize.
You said you were here with Mark Janik and then what was it after that?
I'm here with Mark Janik. We've been working on a proposal for the city of Hood River to do landscape maintenance for all the parks and the bio- so retention bonds. And so, so sorry about that.
Later, okay. So we would know who you are. Okay. Thank you so much. All right. White Buffalo Calf, Wanana Se.
Good evening, everyone. I'll begin reading. Dear Hood River City Council, I still have not received a response from you in regards to my last two letters that I read at your meetings on October 12th and 25th, 2021. Am I invisible? Is this a real city council? Or are you fake? Is this make believe? Is this a figment of my imagination? I haven't seen anyone else up here competing for your time except the ones bidding on your projects. I think you are ignoring me and I'm, am I not coming in clear? Your city has assaulted me and the native peoples of the Pacific Northwest. How dare you say your land acknowledgement and then ignore the very people you say you respect? As you sit there and allow my business to be murdered by your city police, county sheriff, and owner of Betty's Place Restaurant, Ricardo Castaneda, as well as office manager of Nunamaker Property Management and advertising director of Columbia Gorge News, Jody Thompson, Nunamaker Property Management, and the owner of the Oak Street Mall, 416 Oak Street, Hood River, Oregon 97031. A single female indigenous entrepreneur's business was murdered and nobody cares. Now that I have no business to run and so much free time, I'm going to be out telling Native America how it still is in America and how we are just aliens on our own soil. Thanks for the reminder. Now tell me, how would you like to give us our trading post, longhouse, and sweat lodge? Would you like to write a peace treaty or do you want me to file a lawsuit? The city of Hood River has violated the sovereignty of the native peoples and perpetuates genocide against native women. No more! We are the most murdered and missing people, MMIW. Why aren't you protecting me? Unfortunately, the damage is already done to me in the White Buffalo Calf Trading Post, which was established for native peoples of all tribes, for the goodwill and unity of all mankind. City of Hood River, you owe me. Now please stop ignoring me and figure out a way to make things right for me. Peace treaty or lawsuit? You decide. Clearly, I am very unhappy with the way I've been treated here. May no one else suffer unjustly the way you have made me. May the native peoples of Turtle Island live long and be prosperous in Hood River or wherever they wish to live and do business on these lands. In the name of White Buffalo Calf Woman, give us our trading post, longhouse, and sweat lodge in Hood River, Oregon. May the peoples of these regions stop fearing the native culture and way of life. Please step aside and allow us to heal and restore these haunted and sacred regions plagued with spiritual unrest from the trauma the white man caused. We are not aliens here. This is our home. Let us be. Amen. Peace be upon us. White Buffalo Calf wanna say. P.S., postscript. My tribal chairman, David Barnett, would like to meet you. Please let me know a good date and time for me to introduce you. Thank you.
All right, that's all we have for business from the audience. We have a presentation this evening from Kevin Greenwood on the bridge replacement.
Good evening. I believe I've got the ability to bring the presentation up. Can everybody see that?
Yeah, we can see it. Thank you, Kevin.
Great. Well, thank you, Mayor McBride. This is the second time in one day. And the members of the council, my name is Kevin Greenwood. I'm the project director for the Port of Hood River on the Hood River White Salmon Bridge Replacement Project. And really appreciate the opportunity to come in front of you tonight. We're all familiar with this very, very special place. The, we're located Columbia River Mile 169. And we're right smack in the middle of about a 45-mile stretch of the gorge, one bridge in Cascade Locks and another in the Dalles. This is a critical vehicle freight facility and is actually located on a federal waterway and is extremely important to both sides of the river. It's not just a Hood River, Hood River County facility. The history is quite compelling. It's been over 100 years since the bridge, nearing 100 years. And as, as such, it's really been a part of the region's culture as much as any piece of infrastructure in the gorge. Started out as a private bridge, was remodeled to accommodate the dams, was purchased by the port in 1950, and incorporates electronic tolling technology. So it's, it's been an interesting ride. You can see here, the president of the bank that sold the initial bonds is hammering in the last spike in 1924. The tolls have fluctuated over time. Originally, it was 75 cents. At one point, there was 10 cents per head of cattle. I'm sure there were different rates depending on what type of livestock you might be trying to get across the river. And needless to say, the, after 100 years, the bridge, like most infrastructure that are this old, is starting to deteriorate. Many of you have probably tried to cross the bridge today. We're in the process of doing welding and overhead maintenance. And so we really make a focus to review the bridge on an annual basis, make sure that it continues to be safe. And, and as part of that, we've identified, you know, $50 million in repairs and maintenance over the next 15 years. So it's really important to replace this bridge. Load ratings were reduced earlier this year to 64,000 pounds from 80,000 pounds. It's been a huge impact to our timber, fruit, and aggregate industries in the gorge. Port staff, like I mentioned, Port is conducting annual Port staff, like I mentioned, port is conducting annual welding and maintenance, which results in very inconvenient lane closures. We're all experiencing that right now and through the 24th, single lane closures. So again, it's just a lot of maintenance and repairs to keep this current bridge going. The effort to replace the bridge started back in the day of federal earmarks with the Washington side of the bridge, obtaining the funding to produce the feasibility draft, EIS and the TSNL studies. In 2017, the Oregon Legislature picked up the baton and put $5 million towards the project to complete NEPA and develop P3 rules if they needed to be, if they were needed at some point in the future. During the release of the supplemental draft, EIS, there was a huge amount of support for the addition of a bike pedestrian facility and the removal of weight restrictions for commercial truck traffic. This image on your screen shows what the new bridge would look like from Hood River looking into White Sand. The current progress, we, as noted, we finished the supplemental draft, EIS. The final EIS Record of Decision is looking to be completed next year. The By State Working Group, which is a by-state policy advisory committee, has been established to oversee the project and has been very active. We've received $15 million from both states and the US DOT to keep the project moving forward. And we are hoping to get a project management procurement on the street by the beginning of next month. So we can bring technical consultants on board to help lay the path forward for the new bridge.
Kevin, that's 15 million total, not 15 million each.
That is, that's a good clarification. It was five million. Yes, $5 million. We could have used 15 million apiece.
Yeah.
Five million from Oregon, five from Washington and five from the US Department of Transportation. Good point. Mary, I don't know if you agree, but I, from my perspective, I think the By State Working Group may be the highlight of the project to date. The mayors of Hood River, Bingen and White Salmon. We've got a commissioner, county commissioner from Clickattack County and Hood River County and then the Port of Hood River. All the smiling faces on the screen. Commissioner, recently elected Commissioner Mike Fox has replaced outgoing Port Commissioner John Everett, who saved, served ably during his time. And really what the benefit of this group has been is really an opportunity to get the entire region to speak with a singular voice and really provide an opportunity for the region to share its common vision for the new bridge. And and part of that is advocating for the support of a by-state bridge authority. So this by-state governance structure that the working group has preferred would, it would actually take legislation from both Oregon and Washington states to create this new entity. It would develop, finance, construct and operate the replacement bridge. It would insulate the local governments from liability and allow for investment-grade credit rating via toll financing. It would work out the differences between those two states' legal frameworks for public meeting rules, public contracting, operational differences. The board members could be appointed by the governors, legislatures and/or the supporting or surrounding local governments of each state. And this legislation would apply only to by-state local government bridges, which would basically be the Hood River Bridge and the Bridge of the Gods. Upon this being completed, the Port of Hood River would be out of the toll bridge business. So the current Phase Two work plan that we are in the middle of is creating this by-state bridge compact with legislation being introduced in both Oregon and Washington in the short session in 2022. The project delivery approach will be evaluated. We will be working with the Federal Highways Association, who is, will be negotiating tribal compensatory agreements with the four treaty tribes for the impacts to the treaty fishing access sites. Federal Highways learned that the final EIS Record of Decision can't be signed until those compensatory agreements are signed and agreed to. We're going through a very detailed preliminary cost estimate, including what the costs are for port property with the new bridge expansion and the impacts to the port office and maintenance facility. We desperately need to get some significant engineering. This will allow us to get into that 30% range, if not beyond. And then financial plans based upon traffic and will, traffic and toll revenue studies. We will also be ramping up our opportunities to meet with the Hood River County Region One Area Commission on Transportation, of which Counselor Eric Haney is a, is a member of. Megan Ramey also serves on the act, as does Jess Groves at the Port of Cascade Locks. John Davies here in town and County Commission Chair Mike Oats are the others. So here's a good clarifying slide, Mayor, showing the funding from the entities. The port has committed a certain amount of its toll proceeds towards the project. And this will be included in the Oregon State Transportation Improvement Plan, which will be a great opportunity as federal funding continues to come in from Washington DC. And my last slide is to really show the concept schedule, a lot of detail in here. But really to show that that Phase One NEPA is nearing the end next year. We're currently in Phase Two. And there's a lot of assumptions for this project to be completed by the effort of the By State Working Group. But you know, I think with a unified voice at this point, if all, everything falls into line, there's no reason why the new bridge couldn't be opened up by the beginning of 2029. So a lot has to happen. It's going to be really important that we lean on our, our consultant team for their technical expertise. And it's just really been a true pleasure to be a part of this project and working with the mayors and elected officials here in the, in the region and can certainly answer any questions or listen to any comments that the members of the council may have.
Questions from anyone? Eric?
Hi, Kevin. This is Eric Haney on the end here. So I wondered if you could speak a little bit to the question of the aesthetic design of a new bridge. We obviously, the existing bridge has its problems, but it has this beauty that's become kind of iconic. You've also probably noticed that there's a footbridge across the Hood River. If memory serves me correctly, about 30 years ago, people in the port like Bill Mock tried to emulate the design of that bridge to make the footbridge. But in any event, for those that might be wondering about the aesthetics of this upcoming bridge, if you can speak to that and if there are ways to make it somewhat iconic as best we can anyway, instead of just being like, this is concrete bridge.
Sure. Absolutely. So a couple of things. We're currently finishing up the Section 106 process. And what that means is that we are assessing the impacts to historic sites, recreational sites, cultural resource sites, of which the bridge is clearly going to be affected by its removal. So there is a pretty extensive process. And we're working with consulting parties, being the state historic preservation offices, that all the local governments and the tribes. And we, for the last five, oh, I'd say we've had five meetings working through ideas for how we are going to mitigate for this loss or otherwise provide opportunities in the new construction to either have interpretive opportunities or otherwise assess the, what we're, what we will be removing in the, in the historic bridge. That Section 106 memo of agreement will have a whole list of, of elements, everything, and we're not complete. But there could be tribal expectations as to how that bridge is treated. Certainly, the National Scenic Area is going to be reviewing the plans as we apply for the NSA permit. And so it's going to be extremely important that there is a public comment process period where our consultants that are trained in doing large community outreach efforts engage the public, both sides of the river, learn about how we can incorporate changes to the preferred alternative, make sure that we get buy-in from the various agencies that we're ultimately going to be applying for permits to, and then making sure that our application to those agencies follows soon after. Because we, what we want to make sure is that the aesthetics that are agreed to during that public process aren't lost upon the agencies that we would soon thereafter be applying to. So you know, it's kind of a high-level approach to that, but it has been thought and, and once we have our project management team on board, that's going to be one of the first things that they help us define in their first year scoping.
Yeah, I'll just add that I know that this has come up at the By State Working Group is, you know, the, the cost. And, you know, we don't have all the funding for it yet. And we hoped at some point, years and years ago, that it'd be three and a half to 400 million. And now it looks like it's possibly going to be 400 to 500 million. And you know, I don't want to say, well, we're just going to make it out of concrete because that's how it's going to be because it's less expensive. But we would be considering if it's going to raise the toll a significant amount, how much more pretty can we make it? And we, and we definitely want to make it look good. I mean, everyone on the committee wants to look good. No doubt. But you know, there will be some consideration. If it's hugely more expensive, there'll be probably some different choices we'll have to make at that point. And but there's going to be lots of public input, lots of public input. Other questions? Mark?
Sorry. I just want to know if if they've already ponied up the one two thousandth of the trillion dollars that just got passed to pay for this thing.
We're still waiting for our cut.
I, I guess in, in being a little more serious. If, are, are you guys taking advantage of all opportunities to, to take advantage of the new infrastructure funding to, to accelerate the, the steps and schedule that are presented? Because 20, $21 or a lot less than 20, $30 and the, the more efficient we can be, the, the hopefully sooner it all happens. So good luck and make it happen.
Thank you. Well, the By State Working Group heard today from our three government affairs specialists located in Salem, Olympia, DC and Hal Haimstra's presentation was certainly interesting. I would say at this point, it's a little too soon to know how that money is going to work its way to the state of Oregon. And frankly, that was the reason for bringing up the members of the Area Commission on Transportation. It's, it was Hal's assessment that the Acts and the OTC, the Oregon Transportation Commission, will ultimately be the likely way for the public to assess changes or which projects that money should be going to. So I, I would say that our plan here in the next months is to reach out to the members of the Hood River Act. Make sure that they feel comfortable, informed, educated about the project. And, and that we can, as a, as an area can go to the Region One meetings and lobby the Region One Act for this being a high priority. It's a, it's a, it's a tough road to hoe. And when you've got the Rose Quarter Project and the High Five and Counselor, you know, you got a lot of projects there, but it's worth the effort and it's worth it for us to communicate to the members of the act. Get them up to speed on what this project is all about.
Any questions? Megan?
Hi, Kevin. Thanks for coming. I guess when you said the, the new bridge, about 2029, that felt really far away. So I'm wondering how, how optimistic or conservative is that timeline? Is there space where it can get set up or is that if everything goes perfectly, that's as soon as we're looking at?
You know, I, I think it's, the stars have to be aligned. I mean, it's, it's, frankly, it's amazing we've gotten this far. You know, this is a huge project for our community. But I think that, you know, from our consultants, you know, that's a, it's a possibility. I would say it's, you know, it's, I think it is positive. You know, it's, it's hopeful. A lot of things have to fall into place, funding being the biggest and largest. But I think that if we can continue to speak as a region, I think we can get on enough radars. And with the funding that appears to be coming out of DC, we're certainly going to be on the radar. Washington State, Senator King, who represents Clickattack County out of Yakima. He is the leading minority party member in the Washington State Joint Transportation Committee. He already has a placeholder of, I believe, 140 million in, if, and when the Washington State Legislature passes a transportation plan. So our consultants, our government affairs folks are hitting the pavement in their respective capitals every day. And I think that the feet on the ground, boots on the ground, the one-on-one conversations between local government officials and those state and national legislators and key administrators is going to be really, really important. And that's actually one of the neat things about this project is being able to inform and educate people that aren't, don't live right here in the gorge. So I'm, I'm positive. Shooting for 2029. That sounded better than 2030. I mean, we'll still have, even once the bridge opens up, there would still be three years of demolition on the existing bridge. So that work probably wouldn't occur until, you know, be finished up until 2020, 2032 or 2033.
There's no questions?
Hi, Kevin. Thank you for being here and for this presentation. Can you walk me through the tribal compensatory events? How many in the sites do we believe are going to be affected? And what group are we working with locally to try and be that?
Absolutely, Counselor. So I've met with Federal Highways late last week. This is going to be initiated by Federal Highways Association Administration. So it's going to be a government-to-government consultation. Or Oregon Department of Transportation will be providing tech, technical, cultural resource expertise. And so we have another meeting where ODOT is going to be presenting a list of all of the attorneys and directors for those tribes. As you know, each tribe has a different way of doing business and is set up differently as far as how they want to work with the federal government. But we are looking at a six-month process right now currently to start that. And I can just say from a personal level, I work pretty closely with Roger Dick Jr., who's the Fisheries Manager for the Yakima Nation. And in the whole scheme of things, we're relatively low on the food chain, but Roger's been very, very open and willing to share data about these sites. So to answer part of your question, the fishers tie their nets to the piers of the current bridge. So that's one area that will need to be assessed. The obvious one is the treaty fishing access site, which is just to the west of the current bridge. There are also shoreline sites that the Yakima, that they actually sign permits to families to fish along on both sides of the river. So that's another consideration. A fourth consideration is the platform sites that we don't see really closely here in town. But if you go to Stanley Rock or Coburg Beach, there are some sites there as up by Underwood, by the railroad tracks. It's unclear whether those platform sites will be too far out of the area of potential impact to be considered. But these are the types of considerations and conversations that are literally happening this week and in real time with Federal Highways, ODOT, and I keep the By State Working Group up to speed on, on progress.
Perfect. Thank you.
Kevin, do you have anything?
Yeah, sure. Hi, Kevin. This is Tim Cudahy. Great to see you.
Yep, good to see you again.
What are you doing, Mark?
You too.
So the by state governance part of this is really interesting. So is it something that obviously there's a dynamic where you're talking about trying to get the state of Oregon to prioritize it as a project? Do both of the states have to do that or can one state do it and another state not do it? And how does that how does that dynamic work?
Sure. So we have been blessed with a great consultant who actually, in consultation with the by state working group, developed the legislation that was presented to both Legislative Council in Washington and in Oregon. So Washington process is a little bit farther along. But members of the Click Attack County contingent on the working group have been meeting one-on-one with their legislators, and we're going to be doing the same on the Oregon side. It makes the most amount of sense for the individual legislations to occur at the same time, counselor. If there's an issue in one body, it'll be easier working with our government affairs folks and our technical consults to then pivot to the other side so that we can in real time make adjustments, find out a way to make the sausage work for both sides of the river. So yes, I think that having it done in unison in the twenty-two short session will be will be critical. It just makes things a lot easier. And so far, we we got a report today that it looks to be gaining traction with the Oregon Joint Transportation Commission. So that's a committee. So that's that's a good sign.
Great. Sounds true. Thank you.
Jessica. Hi, thanks for coming, Kevin. I have heard elsewhere that advocacy through the acts will be really important. And I know Counselor Haney is on the act for us, just to add, I'm sure if there's any more weight that we could put behind this, I'm sure that that we would all like to help.
You guys have been great. Every time we've applied for a grant or done anything, the city of Hood River has just been really one of our leading lights. And Mayor McBride has really been a champion for this project. And yeah, we will continue to lean on you and get you out there at the right times.
Thanks, Kevin. Anything else? Thank you. Appreciate the presentation.
Thank you very much.
I give a few little snippets every so often, but it's better to have your presentation about what's going on.
Well, it's great to see everybody and I look forward to seeing you in person sometime soon.
Okay, thank you. All right. Oh, we do have something in work session. So that was our presentation. So I'll go ahead and open the work session. Do we have any agenda additions or corrections? Abigail, do you have anything different? So I have one discussion item, which is the first quarter financial performance reports.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, and members of City Council. I believe one year ago, I said that I was giving the most uncertain quarterly financial report I've ever written. And then I will give the proviso that this is the second most uncertain that I've ever written. So the quarterly financial report forecasts out for the next three months, based on the last three months of financial data, using historical patterns to kind of predict how things are going to go. And to that point, the last two years of financial data for the city have basically been devoid of any useful seasonal patterns because of the effect of the COVID pandemic. That being said, it does look like we've passed through the worst of the pandemic, financially speaking. A lot of our important revenue sources have returned to normal. Lodging taxes have returned to growth. Parking meter revenues just recently have gotten back to normal. But there are a few struggling revenue sources, notably parking fines and municipal court revenue. The decriminalization of small amounts of drugs in as well as the prohibition on suspension of licenses for non-payment of fines likely means that we're seeing a permanent reduction in our municipal court revenue versus something purely associated with pandemic. All that being said, municipal court is by no means a revenue source for the city that we rely on or meant to be that in any way whatsoever. So the right now, the projection is to end the fiscal year with a little over four million dollars in ending fund balance. And that's due primarily to ARPA revenue with American Recovery Plan Act revenue replacement, which has for us really, the formula has almost exactly matched what our revenue loss was, putting us very much in the place that we would have been anyway, should the pandemic not have occurred. So that's very good news for the city and for our financial stability. Looking with the proviso of the uncertainty that's built into the financial projections forward as far as expenses go, we'll say that whenever I was looking at an expenditure line item, I would bias towards a conservative or pessimistic look, very much trying to hit on what I really, you know, a good a good projection for the council, not artificially pessimistic. But if there was any sort of ambiguity, I would lean towards a more conservative estimate. So with that being said, I think there is potentially some upside, hopefully built into this that as we move through the fiscal year, hopefully things will trend slightly better than what you're seeing here. But as is, we're well balanced between our revenues and expenditures. Expenditures are down mostly because of a lot of one-time expenses that occurred last fiscal year, such as the deposit into the per-site account, the pay down of compensated absences banks associated with the approval of our new contract with our fire union. And and our CARES Act expenditures. So if you remove those from the financial picture, we're on track to spend about five hundred ninety thousand more this year in operating expenditures in the general fund. That's about a seven percent increase. And as I said, that is a conservative estimate at this point. So you know, we'll be firmed up as we get further along through the through the fiscal year. Outside of the general fund, you gas tax has largely come back to normal. And the utility revenues are coming in strong, about three to five percent over budget, which I think makes sense, given, you know, the warm, dry summer that we had, as well as instituting a whole new top-to-bottom billing methodology for the system. So with that, I'll answer any questions that the council has.
As well. Any questions?
Yeah, thank you. Will, I had a question around, you know, in your report, you talk about some reports, the that rehabilitation project. But I guess what I was wondering is, have we based on previous, are we moving now the potential to be some sort of community fundraising that could offset some of these expenses that we're potentially paying for ourselves?
Not at all. We're one hundred percent following the resolution, the parks CIP resolution adopted by City Council, one of your recent meetings that really directs us to move forward on projects as we're able to get garner volunteer support. I had a phone call with Peg Bogart, the tennis coach and also Tennis Association president just a couple of weeks ago, and talked about what that would look like to sort of reengage that group if they wanted to. And she's going to talk kind of internally within the school district. But we don't expect there to be any movement on that in this fiscal year, which is why it doesn't show up in the projections.
All right. Do you need a motion or just saying we're accepting your report?
Information only, no action needed.
No action. Okay, great. All right, we'll adjourn the work session and open our regular council meeting. Is there anything different agenda additions or corrections for our regular meeting? So we have consent agenda, which is a meeting minutes from our full appointment. I will move, we approve the consent agenda. Megan's made a motion to approve the consent agenda. And Glasses seconded that. All those in favor? Any nays or abstentions? Care about tie? Right. Regular business. Oh, Mark, you're up for the whole the whole, all the business items. Great. City park and property maintenance contract first.
Okay, as you saw, there's a number of the company that's being considered for this contract here tonight. What this is, is a is a request from the council to approve a landscape contract that covers all city parks, covers parking lots downtown, also covers detention basins that we take care of. What we did this year in two thousand twenty one is we we experimented with hiring outside contractors to do our landscape work instead of having our own people doing it. We still did our landscape work. We did lose somebody out of parks, which we haven't replaced yet. And one reason we didn't replace him was because we did contract that the score to see how it was going to go. That was that was a different company. They that company did bid on this on this public publicly bid contract, but they lost out. So what what happened was we we went out for bid. Crystal Greens, who has done work for us in the past and who does work in Hood River on other projects, they won the they had the lowest bid for this for this project. It's like I said, includes work done by both Parks Department, the Water Department, as well as the Sewer Department. Part of the reason we're doing this is because even with our two people in parks, we're not getting done the work that really needs to be done at the parks. Those two people, a lot of times at these parks, like right now with the outside contractor, will have four or five people working on the park. We weren't getting some of the basic things done. So I think that what's going to happen here, like happened this this year is we're going to have a company that is used to doing this sort of work. They do it every day. Our own people who can be doing other other work, more important work, at least for them, instead of doing landscape work. So this is going to leave the pressure off of some of our guys for doing this work. So it's going to reduce some of our our maintenance costs, purchase of vehicles such as lawn mowers and that sort of thing. What is happening as part of this contract is all herbicide, any pesticide that needs to be done, and then mowing, pruning, weeding, all that sort of. So that's the request tonight is to approve a contract for two thousand twenty two to do all this work.
Great. Questions? Mark?
Thanks, Mark. The the plan makes perfect sense. I guess my one question is just it might be for Will, which is we didn't budget for this contract in this fiscal year, but we have reduced in-house expenses. So does it? Does it all work out per the budget or are we going to have to dig into other budgets?
So this was actually specifically budgeted in the adopted budget where we took the personnel appropriation for the summer help roads, parks, and moved it into contract services based on our what we did. So we were forced to contract it out last fiscal year. And through that, we decided that that would be our permanent operating condition going forward.
Two demands for me not remembering.
And we had attempted to try to hire additional people for some of this work and were unsuccessful, correct?
We did have a problem hiring people as well.
Yeah. Any questions on this side? Okay, Tim?
So who does who does this for which work is that? Does the city still?
For the most part, we do it. We did have a irrigation contractor do some more complicated work in the spring. But for the most part, our guys do the irrigation one.
So has there been thought to how much water is put down? Is there some type of variation?
Not really, counselor. We generally speaking, we're putting as much water as it takes to make sure the grass is green. Will mentioned, you know, this was a warm, hot summer, obviously, a dry summer. We had put more water down than we normally do. But we're not at least we're not right now at a spot where we reduce our our water usage and and not have the grass.
It might be worth at least evaluating this. It's not not a criticism. Also, the application of course. That's something that the city has done in the past, and I know this is the contract for the for this company. Is there a comp to how much it adds?
We put down as little as possible. We are our our people, the one we have right now, he's got license for herbicide and pesticides. My faculty trained this week or it was last week. So we try to put down as little as possible. You might notice that our our lawns grass is not completely devoid of any weed. So we're cognizant that not to put down, you know, huge amounts just to give it every clover and every leaf. So we're not going to go to the wall.
And I appreciate that, you know, I'm hoping that the city will work towards making that you know, as less as pretty as much as little as possible going forward. Because I, you know, again, I don't exactly sure what to put in. But, you know, just as a general rule.
Understood.
So those are pretty much my questions, even just trying to making sure that we're trying to be as green as possible in the hot parks. I just I was just going to bring it up now because of this contract deals. And you know, I noticed that your your company that the company has been being a great company. So I'm, you know, hoping that we can.
Right. Anything else? Eric?
Thank you, Mayor, and Mark. Sort of building on Mark's question relating to labor and that expand to kind of capital equipment that's used for our facilities. I guess I have two questions. One, with respect to the actual people who will be doing the work, do we know if Crystal Greens is going to be run on the local labor pool or do we have people coming in from Portland to do the work if they're not from here? So in other words, is there an outsourcing of our labor for this? It's different communities. That's the first question. The second question is with respect to the equipment that actually will be used for this. I assume we have, I believe we have a capital of replacement schedule for mowers and things. We I heard I heard you say basically that we lost a employee member places to that kind of isn't it? Because we're going to spend more here, we're just going to also, right? So we're not rehiring someone, but are we also taking the steps to, if appropriate, to de-accelerate capital and maintenance costs? If if it's not, I'm assuming here that it's not appropriate, that could be incorrect. Again, I don't know if they're going to be bringing over to Portland or how to work. But are we making an appropriate adjustment, if necessary, on maintenance and capital side?
We're definitely going to make that adjustment. For instance, I believe this year there are a couple mowers, couple of machines that are are supposed to be replaced. I'm not I'm not going to, I'm not inclined to replace those because of this contract. So in that particular case, we we will push those out to another year. If this doesn't work out, we go back to what we were doing. But we definitely are making that. And relative to the labor force, do you want to comment about that? I'm not really sure where this labor comes from. I'm not really sure where this labor comes from.
Thanks for the question, Eric. We primarily be using our teams and livers from downtown Portland. So we would be bringing our, we already have routes that go up to the Dallas, and we already do a good amount of work in Hood River. So we have routes that come up here all, already. So we would just be adding to that scope and to that route.
All right. There's no additional questions. There's a motion on page thirty two. I move that we authorize the city manager to sign a professional services contract totaling one hundred forty nine thousand four hundred and sixty eight dollars with crystal green landscaping for landscaping work as described in the attached RFP during fiscal year twenty twenty one, twenty two.
Second that.
Thank you. Megan has made a motion, and Jessica has seconded that motion to authorize the city manager to sign a professional services contract totaling one hundred forty nine thousand four hundred and sixty eight dollars with crystal green landscaping for landscaping work as described in the attached RFP during FY twenty twenty one, twenty two. Any additional discussion?
We got this, we have this, we have a big manager explaining about local labor. Partners in some of the areas, something that we're paying for. People on site. So I think, I think that that's a, that's a drawback. I think the equipment part of it too. Given kind of the living nature of the, of the, these types of machines that are used. But there's some potential that these control that. So I'm not gonna not vote, vote yes on this one. When I, you know.
Okay, Gladys, did you ever hand it to?
Yeah, that's a great question, counselor. And I actually did bring this up to Mark, so maybe you might, might wanna chat about our conversation around potentially hiring local people as far as outsourcing.
Sure. Currently, people that are doing the, the work are, are local, are from the Dallas, and I believe that some of their, some of their people are from the Hood River community. The fact is, is we went out for public bid. We had different people bid on this project. And unfortunately, the, the local contractor was way, my estimation, way above what this contractor bid at. I'm, I'm sort of bound to bring you the lowest cost proposal. Like I said, this wasn't the situation where it was very close, was substantial difference. And it's public money, so. Unfortunately, in this particular case, even though it is local labor, maybe at some point, he will be hiring local because he wants to open an office out here, do more work. But I, I can't control that. I'm sorry, I was surprised that it was so much lower. But they're, they're in control on the labor situation. People travel from towns to different cities and they do work. Sometimes fifty miles is a, a barrier to people.
Thanks for your explanation, Mark.
Is it, is it a contract then? But you're, you're saying it's just the lowest cost? Could you structure, restructure the bid to something, have a different criteria?
I tried to have the bid as, as, you know, vanilla as possible and as equal as possible. I mean, you can write bids and, and write contracts or, or write requests for proposals that do focus more on, on particular areas and particular characteristics. In this particular case, I did, I didn't think, I did not do that.
Thank you.
I was just gonna say, I mean, we're doing this because we couldn't find a local laborer. And, and I do appreciate taking the lowest cost, the as, as good as these resources.
Yeah, I think if, you know, if we, if we could find plenty of people that could actually just work for Public Works and do this work, we wouldn't even have been doing this, but but we weren't able to.
It's a seven. It's always the next round.
Yeah, the next round, next year.
That's correct.
Anything else? I'll call for a motion if you're. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Chair votes aye. That's Mark. Yeah. Your next item, wastewater treatment plant. Inspector.
Okay, well, it's okay. This is a request to approve a contract with Windsor Engineering. Windsor Engineering currently is our plant administrator. They assist the city and make sure that the contracts for the plant, the plants running in, in a correct way, helping us with our industrial pre-treatment program. You saw last meeting or before that, we had rewrite part of our code for the industrial pre-treatment. They were doing that. This contract was a publicly bid contract for inspections of projects that are going on at the wastewater treatment plant. You've seen me up here numerous times. I have another project that's, that's gonna be requested for consideration. And we have other projects that are coming up that are mentioned in this inspection contract. The city needs help having people who know what's going on relative to these complicated projects. That's the UV system. That's the new SCADA system that you approved recently. This digester roof project would be coming to you with the bio solid structure. We're also right now looking at the operations of the plant because we've had, as you know, we've had some, some upsets in the plant. We're not exactly sure where that's coming from. They're gonna be looking at that. They're using some outside vendors when Windsor doesn't have the expertise, so using Kenny Chanks and another firm. So this is something from, from my experience, since we don't have anybody in-house that can inspect some of this stuff. Hugely important here. I'm not having them come every day. Maybe once a week, sometimes twice a week. A lot of times with public contracts, you will see people out every day. Don't think we need that with these particular projects, and also trust that Jacobs, the operator, is gonna be on site as well. But we do need to have some independent inspectors looking at this work. That's what this contract is for. There's some detail in there relative to the RFP that they submitted. Tells you like how often, how much it's gonna cost. I think some of these, some of these costs, you won't see, we won't need as much on here. It's also probably a two or three year time period for these inspections. Some of these projects will be done within six months. Some are gonna continue all the way through next year. That's what this contract is, to request for, I think it's plus two hundred thirty six thousand dollars for Windsor Engineering.
Thanks, Mark. Questions on this? Mark, you got a question?
Um, so I, I read it and it felt a little more like project engineering, but, but it is inspection. I, I, I was just curious of where the line is between those two things.
Oh, well, there's a couple, a couple of issues, or a couple of projects in here where they're going to be analyzing some of our operations down there. But for the most part, these are inspections of projects that are being constructed.
Are we doing part of the plan?
That's correct.
Over independent eyes?
Make sure that the contractor is, is building it to the plan, making sure the stuff that's going on is correct, making sure that, that OSHA regulations are being observed, just things like that.
My real question is, this goes longer than the contract with Jacobs. The current contract with Jacobs is that we're gonna rebid the operator thing. And, and because, my understanding is Windsor, they're, they're like the same group.
They're, they're gonna be producing the RFP for that.
Potential weirdness if we go with a, a different operator? I guess that was my question. I didn't see anything in the term paragraph related to that, but.
Yeah, I don't see the two as, as being really connected because Jacobs during this entire time, even though well, dur- during this, during this period, Jakes will be the operator, but they won't be the contractor actually building the stuff or installing it. There'd be separate people doing that. Jakes will be here during, you know, during the day, obviously, doing the operations. And there'll also be another pair of eyes watching these contractors. But it's, it's, it's separate to me.
Okay, all right.
Whether there's another operator here or not, this is independent.
Just wanted your professional opinion of whether we're getting ourselves into a potentially awkward.
I don't think so.
Just had a question. I didn't understand the fiscal impact, that it'll be allocated to the, the construction project. You know, I'm trying to think about if, if we budgeted for those things, is that? I guess what I'm doing, what does that mean?
It means that, that when we're, we're doing these projects, some, most of the projects have a inspection part in them where inspection of the project costs are part of the project. So, so the funds taken from these guys, some of this can be taken just from the WWTP funding as well, but. Oh, no, what says here the fiscal impact, the inspector costs will be drawn from the wastewater treatment plant material services. Won't go from, be from the projects themselves, it'll be from separate line item in the budget for material services.
Right, I don't have any questions. There's a motion on page. Starts on fifty seven.
I'm authorized to the manager to sign a professional service contract totaling one hundred thirty six thousand six hundred dollars to Windsor engineers for work as the wastewater treatment plant construction inspection services.
I'll check up. Gladys has made the motion, and Megan has seconded the motion to authorize the city manager to sign a professional services contract totaling one hundred thirty six thousand six hundred dollars with Windsor engineers for work as the wastewater treatment plant construction inspection services. Additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Chair votes aye. All right. Now, the digester roof repair.
Yes. Recently, I came to the council relative to a, a contract that Jacobs Engineering bid on, was public bid for a new design of digester mixing, a digester mixing project. With this, with this project is that we have two digesters. One of them has been offline for numerous years. When we do the new mixing, first of all, the roof on the, on the digester right now is, is in disrepair. There also needs to be, have improvements done to it so that the new mixing system, which will be put in both digesters one at a time. This roof needs to, to, to match different venting, different intakes, things like that. But the roof itself is already a bad repair. So this project is to repair that roof in preparation for the mixing project that will be installed there. And then we'll do the same thing on the digestion that we're using right now. So the digester is down, we're gonna repair the roof, this contract is for. Jakes, it will finish their mixing design. When that's finished, then we send that out for bid. The same digester will have the new mixing system installed. And then we'll do the same thing on the existing digester that we're using today. This contract is to repair the roof of the existing digesters not used today. Four hundred and sixty eight thousand dollars approximately. Same contractor, the publicly bid contract. RL Remers is also the contractor that received the contract for the UV system. So we were, we're happy to see that because now we have, we have just one contractor doing two important projects, hopefully about the same time.
This digester was just, it's been offline for a long time, and we didn't need it. We didn't, I mean, it's partially for redundancy, but it's partially for capacity. Is that kind of what?
It's absolutely for capacity.
For capacity, okay.
I can't give a good reason why it's been offline for nineteen years.
Yeah, I just wondered why, you know, twenty years ago, it never got fixed.
The one digester went down today, they mean. They're supposed to work in tandem. You know, it's, it's both. If one goes down, if one needs to be cleaned, one we've been using, needs to be cleaned. It's absolute, needs to be cleaned. So hopefully, we get this done soon as possible. If we get the mixing in there as soon as possible, then we can clean the existing one, we have to clean the, the old one as well. But the, the one we're using right now absolutely needs to be cleaned. It's not, it's, it's, it's running not very efficiently. Having both digesters is the way this plant was designed, that's the way it's supposed to run. Unless we need to.
And these are a long-term capital improvement to plan.
Fifty, sixty year.
We're, we're just coming up to the next personnel.
Yeah, these are long, long-term capital projects.
The, on the, the budget, and thank you for starting this, getting this going. The budget did talk about having to take money out of the life machinery and the replacement funds to cover businesses more expensive than what we thought. What does that gonna mean, like, a lot of them?
Well, there are some projects that we're, that we're not gonna undertake. Recently, we approved a project on the riverside, was to replace a substantial amount of sanctuary sewer. Because that sewer was falling apart and sending some rocks down to, to the plant, so there's a core stream project that I hope we don't have to do. But I think there's some other areas we can find money to pay for this. The estimate was three hundred thousand dollars. Unfortunately, that wasn't based on really, on much, but designed to, designed for this roof. As you can see through the memo, we paid them approximately thirty five thousand dollars. But before that, I don't, I don't remember there being a very good estimate that was done based on, based on some design. It's unfortunate, it was three hundred thousand dollars, where it came from. It was, was a substantial number, but unfortunately, the roof is, it's more complicated and more, more expensive than that.
Will, were you gonna add something?
Yeah, I can add to that. So this is being paid out of the, there's a, an account that the USDA makes us put about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars into every year as part of a bond covenant. Basically, it's that they wanna show that we're taking care of our assets and that we're not running basically a, a utility that's building up a bunch of deferred maintenance that could endanger our ability to pay them back the money that we owe them. So it's coming out of that account, which is basically to be used for anything that keeps, that replaces our existing infrastructure and keeps it current. And so there's a large appropriation in there for other machinery and equipment. And so one of the other instances was, there's a generator that we, we can replace, but it's not nearly as urgent or as important as this. So it's kind of out of that broader appropriation for miscellaneous machinery and equipment that should also be kept up out of this asset repair and replacement account that we're taking from just this year because this is, this is the most urgent priority this year. But we continue to put up a hundred and seventy K into that account every single year.
I do know about all those buckets of money. Do you have other questions now here? Okay.
There's a question and a comment for the question booth, so. Not saying there will be some financial problem, but if there were, don't we have the ability, because this is supported by the whole, by repairs, to pass that upstream if we needed to?
Yeah, it's, it's really, so the city was in a much different financial shape when we took out these loans. So, yeah, we, we are, it's basically superfluous at this point. We have a very sound, financially sound utility, utility funds. But this is sort of a, this was an account that was set up as a bond covenant from a loan that we took out. Gosh, I mean, before my time, certainly many, many years before my time. And, and it just is a covenant that we agreed to at the time, and it carries forward for the thirty-plus years of the loan.
And I forgot to just have a comment. When I decided to run for council, you know, just a member of the community, I've always just had this feeling that this sewer facility is such, and it sounds ridiculous, but I'm gonna say sewer is special in the same sense. It's just so special to the community because it does an amazing thing. It keeps, it keeps this kind of sanitary, it keeps the river sanitary. And I mean, I mention this because I think we have a tour. And I've been looking forward to this tour for three years. But just as a local person running up here, I think we spend so little time.
Um, but just as a local person growing up here, I think we spend so little time talking about our sewer facility, but in my mind, it's like the most important thing uh, in just, in some ways, but I guess I just wanted to reflect on the specialness of our sewer facility. It really is an amazing facility, and I say that, someone, somebody said that, but it's really true. My humble opinion.
I love that attitude. Sewer and water. You will not have a city if you don't have those two things. That's just basic. Right, um, there's a motion for this on page one hundred and three. I move that we authorize the city manager to sign a construction services contract with RL Reimers Construction in the amount of, uh, four hundred and seventy-eight thousand, four hundred and seventy-five dollars to repair a digester roof at the wastewater treatment plant.
I'll just, uh, Tim's gonna say it.
Okay, Megan's made a motion and Tim has seconded the motion. Authorize the city manager to sign a construction services contract with RL Reimers Construction in the amount of four hundred and seventy-eight thousand, four hundred and seventy-five dollars to repair the south digester roof and provide crack ceiling to the interior digester walls of the wastewater treatment plant attached as a proposed contract. And I think so this, oh, oh, I'm reading the whole thing. Oh, okay. Yeah, keep going, keep going. Um, well, we've got it all. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Chair votes aye. Alright, regular business, we are done. Thank you for all that information, Mark. Um, city recorder.
Please ask me here. Uh, your honor, I'd like to entertain a motion for a second from the reading of ordinance twenty-sixty-four by Tadell.
I move we read ordinance twenty-sixty-four industrial pretreatment for the second time by title only.
Okay, Megan has moved and Jessica has seconded, um, the reading of ordinance twenty-sixty-four.
Well, one, this also includes the one, um, interlineation change that was, uh, read into the record at the first reading. It's on page one sixty-five. It's, it's a rewording of the section on penalties and was driven by DEQ uh, since they are taskmaster on this and they, uh, first in charge wanted it consistent in her view with the federal law. So it shall be done and that's what this reflects. It's, uh, on page one sixty-five, it's section twelve point oh six point one one zero sub two A.
Do you need the motion or is that?
No, it's, it's in, it's west before you, so it's, I just wanted you to know that this does reflect the one change that you asked for.
Okay, thank you for noting that it is in, um, our packet as, as you described. Um, so we have a motion from Megan and a second from Jessica for, uh, reading of the twenty-sixty-four, uh, ordinance twenty-sixty-four industrial pretreatment, um, for the second time by title only.
Counselor Meade?
Aye.
Counselor Saunders? Yes. Counselor Corvina?
Aye.
Counselor Mena?
Aye.
Counselor Rivera?
Aye.
Counselor Zane?
Yes.
Your honor.
Yes.
On this twenty-sixty-four, the ordinance is the name, title twelve, facilities, section twelve point zero six, form requirements for the users of the, of the city, um, treatment treatment works regarding pretreatment and wastewater. Of the federal municipal code, connecting the pre-treatment requirements, procedures for wastewater treatment in the system of the current state and federal law.
Alright, thank you again. Um, so, mayor call, um, I think maybe at some point we need to talk about, um, potentially whether we should have a discussion about the, um, act. When do you have another meeting on that, Eric? Do you know? Oh, at least, okay. I would, I mean, I was just wondering whether we as a group would want to be saying yes, we absolutely need to get this bridge replaced and if somebody, big pots of money come in, the whole region agrees that that's a good deal. And then maybe we should have some discussion with the other people on the act that are in that group. Um, okay. Um...
It's a relatively small group, so we could, we could gather.
Zoom call or something like that, alright. Um... Do you think we would be able to, is it after our next council meeting, do you think?
Um, well, I guess we'd certainly want to have it before one of those presentations to be made to the act, which I don't know that's next week.
Yeah, I don't think so.
Yeah, it could be after, sometime next month, if you agree.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I'd just ask everyone, are you guys good with agreeing that this is regionally extremely important and we should be, um, going, yeah, thumbs up. Everybody's nodding, okay, alright. Yeah, alright, so, um, if that's the case, then maybe, um, that would go, could work with you to see about putting something together to meet with the others? Alright, alright. Um...
She does, yeah.
Okay, alright.
She's also involved with another act, so she's gonna call.
Okay. Alright, that'd be great. Um, Energy Council, we have a meeting tomorrow and, um, we have a few people rolling off of that committee and we have a couple of applications and I'm on the committee to help that those. One of them is, um, I know, is Sue Powers from our planning commission, um, who has an interest in it and has an interest in energy. Um, so, uh, I think she's a great applicant. We, we need several people, uh, we're replacing several people, so we only have two applica- applicant, applicants right now. So, um, just letting you guys know about that. Uh, that's all I've got this evening. Eric, anything else? Jessica?
Um, we, uh, through work, we held our annual economics exposé and, uh, Counselor Zan Miller was there, at least I know. Um, it was, uh, on Zoom, so it was recorded, so you guys still can watch. We have all the slide presentations. Um, one of the, the most interesting presenters was second, so we'll have to reschedule and I can share when that is, um, because it's in uh, Jennifer Kayden got to see him present as well. It was, uh, Sun County, Colorado, and all the things that they're doing around portable housing. Uh, so there's really good ideas. Uh, so I will share that when we have it and then, um, perhaps Counselor Rivera's gonna mention this, but I, so I don't want to steal her thunder but the, we're, the one community health kiddo vaccine clinic in the river, so she's gonna have to tell us all. I'm very excited. How many can sign this?
Um, also the, um, it's, is it on the kid web site that we?
Yes, yeah, it's, uh, it's the kid dot org, or it's my symposium.
Okay, great, great. Mark?
Yeah, it's very good. I, I, I always enjoy that symposium and encourage people to, you know, snacks were not nearly as good.
No, yours is, oh, snacks.
Yeah, I own very full. Um, I, I, with the signing of the trillion dollar infrastructure thing, I, I just want to encourage, um, us as an organization to have as many shovel-ready binders ready to submit as possible because, because it's those of us that are prepared that are gonna, are gonna get the dollars and, um, I hope that we are. And, and it's beyond, beyond just the bridge. If it's, if, if we have the opportunity to get rid of the rest of our blood, I joints, we, we should do it. So, um, I know I'm preaching to the choir here for sure, but, um, I, I have a sense that, oh, and the iron's about to be really hot be able to strike. I don't have anything else. We need, um, the Braves one. That's too bad.
Alright, thanks, Mark. Uh, Gladys?
Yeah, I'm happy to share. So I, I do, uh, One Community Health has some upcoming events specifically for kiddo vaccines, five to eleven-year-olds. Uh, the first event will take place in the Dallas on the seventeenth and then we have a couple of events that are coming up here in the river. Um, at this time, though, if you are a patient of the clinic, get your kiddo scheduled as they can receive the vaccine prior to that event. So please call the clinic, five four one three eight six sixty-three eighty, to get more information about when you can get your kiddo scheduled.
Great, thanks, Jim. Alright. Okay, we have an executive session this evening. So we're gonna, um, go into executive session for, um, Oregon revised statutes, one nine two point six six oh one E to conduct deliberations with persons designated by the governing body to negotiate real property transactions. Representatives of the news media and designated staff are allowed to attend the executive session, although the members of the audience are asked to leave the room and we will end the public broadcast. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any of the deliberations during the executive session except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decision may be made nor final action taken in the executive session. The executive session is anticipated to last thirty to forty-five minutes. Um, at the end of the executive session, the city council meeting will be adjourned and no action will be taken. We will now just continue live feed and recordings.